So. I'm going to call the meeting of the Springfield City Council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare.
Here.
Councillor Woodrow.
Here.
And Councillor Pictionary.
I'm here, thank you.
All right, we've got two items for the work session tonight. The first one is the update to Willamalane's 2020 or 2012 Park and Recreation Comprehensive Plan with Monica Sather, and I'll turn it over to Monica.
Thank you, Mayor Van Gordon, and good evening, councillors. The plan we're talking about this evening is the 20-year comprehensive vision and implementation strategy for Willamalane's district-wide parks and recreation services. I wanted to mention that Christina Boe, who is managing the plan update project at Willamalane, and Eric Adams, Willamalane's Planning Parks and Facilities Director, are with us, who can join our discussion and help answer questions when we get to that point. So as an overview of what this plan does and what we'll be working on to update it, I'll mention some highlights, but recall many of you served in your leadership roles here at the city when Willamalane last updated its plan and worked on it between 2011 and 2013. A clarification I wanted to mention is although the plan's time horizon looks out 20 years, Willamalane revisits this document in depth every 10 years to explore opportunities for updates, which is why we're here today. Some tangible things that can result from this long-term plan are funding and projects, for example, the Thurston Hills Natural Area and the trails within there, the Middle Fork and Mill Race paths, which are also a key part of the city's transportation system, and then most recently, the master plan for the Georgia Pacific Natural Area, which this group worked to create, followed by council approval last fall. In the land use planning worlds, as mentioned in the packet for this evening, this plan is a specific element of Springfield's overall comprehensive plan. So with that, we will eventually come to council with the request to adopt Willamalane's plan. Our interest in seeking your guidance this evening is about at which stages of the project council has interest in updates from staff, and what council wants staff engagement at any of the key steps to look like, whether it's a memo, update, or a work session. So I don't have a presentation, but I do want to recap the high-level phases of the project in a visual way really quickly, so I'll pull up one PowerPoint slide here. Okay. So this early step would be a chance to review a more detailed version of the work plan before a work launches more formally and publicly. We could share more about the proposed methods for information gathering, community engagement, and some of the more technical details that we haven't yet, like the project boundaries or other assumptions, and then get into the project timeline. If we did a work session on this, this would be council's opportunity to ask questions and offer big-picture thoughts, but it could also happen tonight. One thing the city and Willamalane staff are preparing soon as part of this step is to discuss the project's draft community engagement plan in detail with the Springfield Committee for Citizen Involvement on April 5th, before proceeding to that second step, which is about researching what's working about the existing park and recreation system and what could or should change. Information we would share at this stage would be after Willamalane completes its needs assessment, and the needs assessment really involves a mix of following park system standards for service levels, and these are more formula-based. But it would also involve a mix of hearing from people, stories, and ideas according to the community engagement plan, just to really make sure the plan meaningfully hears from people as part of community engagement, but also that the adopted plan reflects that as best as possible. So here we would report on how Willamalane conducted the needs assessment and what we learned from that, and could hear from council here about what we should consider before beginning to identify the projects. And at this third phase, it would be to share information about how Willamalane informed and prioritized the draft service, service strategies for recreation, or draft list of park projects. What comes out of this step will essentially be a project list, and that will be ranked with funding and possibly operational management ideas tied to them. This could include new sites that aren't already dedicated to parks or other types of facilities, so possibly some acquisition considerations. And lastly, council will participate in this step as Springfield's official decision-making authority on planning matters like this. If council wants to engage in one or more of the previous three steps, we will also provide an overview of any new findings we didn't already share before. The purpose of the hearing, once we get to this step, in terms of content, will be to confirm that the draft plan satisfies the land use approval criteria and state requirements, and wanted to mention that Land County's Board of Commissioners will also need to co-adopt the plan based on Willamalane's early thinking so far, and we expect this to be about 2023. So that's the overall plan, and wanted to mention at one point back in 2013, when Willamalane went the previous round of updates, we had a work session with council between steps two and three, but it doesn't mean we have to do it the same way. So wanted to play out all those options and discuss them, and if we need to, we can pull up the detailed timeline if we need, but I will back out of this now. I hope that overview was helpful, and the main questions really are at what stages is there council interest, and how would we best share that with you?
All right, Mary Lee.
I remember when we went through this before, and I actually like that system, because when we got to the work session between two and three, we actually had the beginning process and evaluation that Willamalane did. When we start in the first one, we don't have that benefit of having that information. So we were still doing it the way we did it before, at least gave us information in between those steps two and three to, we just had more meat to talk about, to be in conversation and understanding of. And a lot of the questions that we might have had in step one were already answered by that time. So I think it gave us, it gave us more of something to chew on and get a better idea as to where Willamalane was coming from in what they were doing. So I think the system worked before. I liked the system that we had, and that's my input.
All right, anybody else? All right, no other questions or comments? Wow, we are a quiet bunch tonight. So Monica, it sounds like follow the same, follow the same sort of strategy that we did before and put, you know, and put a work session in, I think it was between two and three, and then just keep us informed as this goes along. I think we'll have a pretty robust conversation between step two and three.
Thank you, very clear, and I would expect that to happen next year, but we will keep paying attention to that timeline and make sure to get on the calendar. So thank you. Know you're all busy.
All right, take care. Have a good night. All right. Oh, good. I see Sam and Nathan playing. So second items, the master fees and charges CPI with Sam and Nate.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, good evening, everyone. So I'm Sam Togutoki, I'm here with Nathan Bells. You can see, talking about our lovely master fees and charges, the CPI inflation rate for this year. Previous council sessions had directed staff to look at the Bureau of Labor Statistics Western Region Class Size B or C cities, which was supposed to sit around a 3% or 4% increase and sort of follow along with inflation. A few weeks back, when we looked at the rate, it's sitting currently at 8.1%, which is much higher than the previous years had been. While we definitely think it's important to keep these fees going and increasing to keep up a sort of a retention of costs for these services they provides, we also understand that 8.1% would be a tough rate to pass on to the community, and we wanted to get council's thoughts and feedbacks on this for both this rate going forward, and then possibly future rates you all want to see. I just didn't want to come forward in a few months with the master fees and charges and surprise you all with 8% of an increase, so I want to get ahead of that one while we still could. Nathan's here, he's excited for the topic, and might provide some feedback as well, but for now, I think we'd love to hear from you all on your thoughts on this inflation going forward.
And I'd like to have a little more context. When we saw this rate, it was kind of hard to swallow, and so, you know, in fiscal year, when we went to this index, I think it was back in 19, then in fiscal year 20 with the COVID pandemic, the rate was 2.28%, but because of the pandemic and the impact it was having on the community, we chose not to pass along the increase that year. The following year in fiscal year 21, the rate was 1.6%. We did not make up the previous year's rate, and we just implemented the 1.6% increase, and now here we are at 8.1%. This master fees and charges schedule includes all the fees across all the departments, and for many of them, it's basically fees for services. We've talked a lot about our property tax constraints, the collar of 3% to measure 5 and 50, which has really pushed us into fees for services, where we can directly tie them to a specific individual rather than a service that is consumed in the aggregate. For finance and dealing with inflation that we're dealing with right now, is we don't know what the future holds, but if it is sustained, we will fall further behind. And when your main revenue source is capped, we need to stay current with these other fees, and so I just want to add that to your deliberations this evening.
Leonard.
Thank you, Sean. Nate, I certainly don't want to pass on an 8.1% increase in the cost of living to the public, but I also don't want to leave the city's services in alert either. So would this, would this money that we're collecting from fees for services be folded or routed right back into services?
Well, again, a lot of these, and we haven't actually done an analysis of whether they're full collection. I can say, for instance, on the planning side, I know that that full collection, because we made a deliberate decision sometime back to incentivize development within this community and not charge out the full cost of those services. But in other areas, our intention is full cost, we just haven't done that analysis in a number of years. So back to, does it go directly to services? You know, indirectly, yes. It is part of our revenue in terms of putting together our budget each year that allows us to have the staffing that we need to perform a lot of the services that these are tied to.
Yeah, that answers my question. I certainly don't, again, let me reiterate, it kills me to put the tax burden on the public, but I also don't want the quality of our services to suffer. So I am regretfully in favor of passing the full, the full cost of living on. That's what I got.
Corey.
All right, so I want to preface this by saying I know that this would, what I'm about to say would probably take a lot of capacity and a lot of work. However, have we considered weighting the increases or looking at, as opposed to doing a flat 8.1%, kind of looking at the different services individually and seeing if there's a way we can both be considerate about the burden and who is paying it, and also see where are places where we could maybe go to 4% or 1%, and I know that maybe you just can flat out say we do not have the capacity to do that, but it would be a way to look at it as opposed to just across-the-board, flat eight or three or whatever, but to look at those services and think about the use and the ability to pay for folks who would be using them, if that makes sense.
I would say unofficially, there are some of the directors take that opportunity within their departments to look with their budget analysts and see what their revenues are and their costs. So I think planning was a good example. They will usually go to the maximum allowed increase. I've seen our library director, when she returns the fees, talk about we'll hold this one flat this year, this one's fine to keep as it is. Nathan, do you maybe speak to courts how they kind of operate, but I think each director kind of takes a hands-on approach with what their staffing limits are.
Yeah, and with course, some of those are big, clearly at the state level, and we don't have that control over them. You know, with others, you know, we don't apply these necessarily as a flat across the board. A lot of our fees are in the smaller increments, and rather than get very odd sizes, we will sometimes kind of pay attention to this, and then do more sort of incremental jumps every few years to try to keep us in pace with the inflation. So to a certain degree, we already do that. I'm not familiar enough with the individual fees in here in terms of how much work it would take to start breaking each one down and say, okay, who's paying these? How do we feel about their ability to pay and whatnot? A lot of times, it's just easier to apply a inflation index from purely a staffing convenience level.
So, so one of the questions that I had, sometimes we see these in two sets of fees, right? So one of them would be, hey, here's a set that is a CPI adjustment, and then a different set that you're recommending, you know, either cost containment adjustments or a separate set. Are we getting one set of fee increases this year? Are you asking us to consider two sets? Is there another one that's sort of behind this?
There will always be multiple sets, because it's just not a one-size-fits-all. But it's easier to do this when we know that the sort of driving rate is an inflation index, and then as we get to each of those fees, working with departments, we kind of come to the proposal that we then bring in front of you. Knowing that the driving fee is 8%, if, you know, if you want to still move forward kind of with that and to implement 8% where we can, where it makes sense, you know, we'll apply discretion.
Right, so the proposal we would see in a few weeks would be, you're going to take the number that we choose and sort of apply it across the board, and then you're going to make some adjustments to, I don't know, let's say, give it a sanity check to see that it, you know, we're not charging people weird, sort of weird fees.
Yes, exactly.
I would clarify, Santa PAC has their own fee process, you'll see that one separately, and then our stormwater and wastewater user fees you'll see separately. But all of those plus these fees become the master fees and charges schedule, so there will be a few different fee books you may go through, just so that it's clear.
Okay, but we're not going to see, we're not going to approve a number tonight, and then you're going to go back and, you know, say, add 8%, and then making another adjustment on top of that.
Correct.
And then correct me if I'm wrong, Sam, but let's just use one very large fee structure that we have, it's for our SDCs. I believe our SDCs will most likely have the 8.1% applied to them.
That's correct.
Okay, anybody, anybody else? My, I'm not seeing hands go up. You guys are a quiet bunch tonight. My preference would not to be go to 8%, instead just try to keep it at that 5% level, and kind of choose a number that's a little bit in between and go a little bit more conservative this year. Inflation is, it's a tough one. I know we've got to recover, we've got to recover costs, but we have to do this in a way that makes some sort of sense.
Can I take those directions?
I'm looking around for some head nods to see that if people, the, okay, I'm starting to see some head nods. The other thing, Nate, that I think is, you know, is important the next time we see it. You rattled off four or five fee increases that we had, is, you know, that make up the whole master, the master fee schedule. If we can just get the bracket at some point of, hey, roughly, here's the increases that we've approved, so people can understand, you know, kind of the broader context of what we're doing. Sometimes they come to us in, you know, sort of onesie-twosies, right, and we lose sort of sight that we've got stormwater and wastewater and Santa PAC and the inflation adjustment out there.
I see Sam nodding his head, so I think he has a understanding of exactly what you're asking for.
Yeah, sorry, trying to take notes every, if that makes sense, Mayor, no problem.
Okay, Corey.
Can I, I just want to piggyback on that, which loops back to what I said originally, which is, and maybe you already have this, but I also would like to just know who is, who is, who's making those payments, like who's responsible? Because that impacts how I think about it too, especially looking across overall. Because if it's, you know, an individual who's using the library, you know, doing all of these things, it's just, it feels like the impact on folks is something that matters as well.
Leonard.
Thanks, Sean. I'd also like to piggyback on Councillor Rodley's first remarks, and just ask if it would be possible to break down the increases and, or actually the impact, the economic impact of the raise, the rise in rates for commercial establishments as opposed to residential accounts. Is it impossible for the financial department of the city to make that sort of a, make that sort of a breakdown?
Yeah, we would have to look at, of course, look at maybe this year's permits and try to trend, or I think permits, number of permits, and then what that increase probably do. Without maybe getting the numbers, I'm not sure, kind of confidence level to give you this moment, I'm not sure, Nathan, if you've done something similar before, I haven't thought, but it could be done with a little bit of, here's our parameters of what our assumptions were, based on what I think next year will be like.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I'd like to see that, if that breakdown is possible.
And I just kind of want to mention too, in this, if your memory, you know, of this schedule, it's a pretty large schedule with a lot of fees. And so just kind of breaking it down, I'm trying to kind of work this in my head, how we might provide this information to you. But I would say sort of the largest, you know, group that is paying these fees is the development community. The majority of them are associated with development.
Maybe just take a step back, Councillor Stare. My mind went to development first, or residential development first, commercial development, but are you saying residential as in, like what police impact on citizens, library, like residential is a individual person's impact by these fees or residential developments?
The first one, I was looking for the impact on people who live in Springfield as opposed to people who do business in Springfield.
Yeah, it may make it a little more, a little more, but I can look into that for you, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so I know that there's questions from both Corey and Leonard about that. So I think we're looking for probably, and I'm looking at you, Corey and Leonard, probably more like 75% certainty, Sam, this doesn't necessarily, you know, have to be that 99.99% precision level. I think what they're asking is ultimately sort of more directional by nature to try to understand where these costs are hitting folks.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Yes.
Correct. Thank you.
And then when, I know you guys are coming back in a couple of weeks, but that should be the place when we, we're going to see the actual schedule with the new proposed fees attached to it, so that we can actually kind of look, look at individual fees and ask about them, correct?
Yeah, you all are pretty busy, so it'll be more like early May, but it'll be that time you'll have a much longer session to review the fees, and then a follow-up to adopt the resolution.
The old will be redlined, so you'll see the old fee and the new fee, and I think as you work your way to the schedule, it'll be pretty evident of who's paying those fees.
Okay. Do you need any other direction? Are you guys good?
I think we're good, 5%, and some understanding of the kind of impact on classes.
Yep.
Of individuals, of groups.
All right, great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to adjourn the work session, and then we are going to reconvene at seven o'clock. I'm going to call the regular session of the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor.
He's going to be late for a couple of minutes.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare.
Here.
Councillor Woodrow.
Here.
And Councillor Pictionary.
Here, thank you.
And I'll just note for the record that we're expecting Councillor Pitts any minute now, he's just running a couple of minutes late. Could you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag. Into the republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide testimony. There are two times designated for public testimony this evening under public hearings in business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the entrance of the city council chambers and give it to the city recorder. If you're joining us online with a tablet, smartphone, or computer and wish to speak either of those times, you will use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of public testimony is as follows. Anyone in the public, anyone in person in the council chambers, and then we will proceed to anyone who has raised their virtual hand. Before we call the first item, how many people do we have joining us, Neil?
Mayor, we have approximately 30 people in the room here in the council chambers and 23 online.
All right, first item, please.
First item is Springfield upbeat. Item number one is the mayor's recognition. Item A, recognition of Eagle Scout Devin Madden, and Mayor Van Gordon, this is your item.
All right, do we have Devin here? All right, come join me at the podium.
Right here, right here, yeah.
Then we're going to have everybody up, and we'll take a quick picture.
Let's go.
All right, so I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize Devin Madden for earning a prestigious rank of Eagle Scout and receiving his award during his Court of Honor on Saturday, January 29th, 2022. His scouting attributes include, but are not limited to, Arrow of Light 2014, Recruiter Badge 2016, joining the Order of the Arrow 2018, earned Brotherhood in the Order of the Arrow 2019, Eagle Scout 2021, 133 camping nights, and 153 community service hours. Along with this incredible list from above, Devin was also required to plan and conduct a service project to help his local community. This past year, after the troop had already placed American flags at the gravestones of veterans for Memorial Day, Devin realized that all of those flags had been placed, were old, tattered, and needed to be retired and replaced. After speaking with the cemetery leadership, they agreed to have Devin replace the flags and create new holders for the flags as part of his service project. Devin did the fundraising, raised enough money to replace all of his flags, and created the holders. And this next Memorial Day, May 30th, the graves of the veterans will have brand-new flags flying in memorial. So congratulations, that's quite an accomplishment. We're really proud of you.
Thank you.
So do you want, you have anything to talk about your project before we have these guys up and we'll take a quick picture?
I just, I want to thank everybody who donated the money to the project. There was two people involved, gave a lot more money than I thought they would, and they really helped me with the project. That is what I give a special thank to them.
Yeah, and this community is really just service-minded, and like when I heard this story, it was just really fantastic here, so congratulations, and then if you guys want to come up and we'll take a quick picture together.
Let's go.
We're going to have to get close like we like each other. He brought the whole crew.
Yeah.
You're short. You're shortish, so stand there.
That's true, you're, find a hole.
Okay, everybody settle. I like you like each other. Thank you, guys.
All right, cool, go sit down, guys.
All right, next item, please.
Mayor, your next Springfield upbeat is 2022 Women in Construction Week proclamation, and Mayor, this is again your item.
All right, and I just have a proclamation to read into the record, and then we will get a copy to the chapter in the next couple of days. So whereas the National Association of Women in Construction was founded by 16 working women in the construction industry in 1953, and was established in 1955 in Fort Worth, Texas, the work developed by NAWIC Chapter 77 has benefited the state through community development educational programs. Whereas the Eugene Springfield Chapter has unceasingly promoted the employment and advancement of women in the construction industry, and whereas NAWIC- And whereas NAWIC Chapter Seventy-seven has sought to achieve successful results for Lang County in a cooperative spirit with other organizations. Therefore, I, Sean Van Gordon, the mayor of Springfield, do hereby recognize NAWIC Chapter Seventy-seven and its many dedicated volunteers who work on behalf and support women in construction, and proclaim March sixth through twelfth, twenty-twenty-two as Women in Construction Week. Okay, next item, please.
Mayor, your final Springfield upbeat is the twenty-twenty-one Groundwater Guardian Presentation to City Council, and Megan Murphy is joined by Amy Chinets for the staff report.
And Megan Murphy, City of Springfield Environmental Services Analyst, and I'm here tonight with Amy Chinets, Springfield Utility Board's, uh, groundwater protection coordinator. And, thank you so much for having us, twenty-twenty-one, it was Springfield's twenty-fifth year as a designated groundwater guardian community. We are thrilled to join you tonight to celebrate our silver anniversary. Reflecting on a quarter century of groundwater guardianship is, groundwater guardianship is an apt time to focus on this year's theme for National Groundwater Awareness Week. The promotion of professional opportunities in the groundwater industry. According to the American Geoscience Institute, nationally, there are more than one hundred thirty-five thousand open positions in the industry now. Because over forty-four percent of the US population depends on groundwater as a primary water source, including us here in Springfield, developing interest in the groundwater industry is of vital importance. Groundwater professionals span a wide variety of careers and skills, including well contractors, hydrogeologists, groundwater policy advocates, and protection specialists. The educational programs that our groundwater guardian team supports in the Springfield schools contribute to the national effort to educate and inspire young people to consider a career in groundwater or water resources more generally. In a community whose identity is so closely tied to our water resources, we are proud to answer the call to promote professional opportunities in groundwater. My colleagues and I at the city strive to incorporate groundwater protection into everything we do. By cleaning our stormwater runoff with green infrastructure like swales and rain gardens, we are ensuring that the quality of our waterways and our groundwater are the best they can be. SEB, the city, Long Tom Watershed Council, and other agencies have been working together to improve stormwater runoff at older sites that were developed prior to current water quality standards. This work is voluntary for businesses that wish to participate. A newly awarded grant from the Oregon Health Authority Drinking Water Protection Program will help businesses improve their stormwater voluntarily with housekeeping practices and green infrastructure. If anyone would like more information about Springfield's water protection programs and projects, please contact Amy at SEB or me at the city. Thank you for supporting our community's protection efforts and happy Groundwater Awareness Week.
Thank you to both of you, and hopefully we'll get the pla- to see the plaque soon. All right, I think we're ready for the next item.
Mayor, the next item is a consent calendar.
I, I don't see anything on the consent calendar.
Your next item is public hearings, uh, public hearing number one, a public hearing for the Declaration of Surplus Real Property. Resolution number one, a resolution authorizing the sale of surplus real property located at seven-two-five South Fifty-seventh Street in Springfield, but Bahana Keane and Christina Kraz are here for the staff report.
Uh, I am here in person, and Christina is virtual, so I will start. Um, so in January, I came before you at the counselors, sorry, let me back up, nice to see you. I was, uh, so ready to get this resolution going that I forgot to introduce myself, Bahana Keane's, any manager's office. Um, it's nice to see you all tonight in person, it's been a while. Uh, so back in January, I came before you and I requested the authority, um, to, uh, partner with a broker to sell the real property located at seven-twenty-five South Fifty-seventh Street, it is a city-owned property. Um, so tonight I am here requesting that the council declare that address, seven-twenty-five South Fifty-seventh Street, to be declared as a surplus property, and if agreed, we will sell under the broker's agreement, and, uh, the list price will be four ninety-five. So, I suppose I'll let, uh, Christina Kraz continue with the resolution, I think.
Thanks, Bahana. The procedure for night, for tonight is for the city council to hold a public hearing, and then based on any input received at that public hearing, declare the property surplus by adopting the resolution. Unlike recent, um, declarations of surplus real property that you've heard recently, this one does not already have an offer on it. So what you are doing is authorizing the advertisement and eventual sale of the property under the terms and the listing agreement um, to the best offer, working with that real estate agent. So if you adopt this, um, surplus property resolution tonight, it would not come back to you for final approval if it was able to be sold under the terms of that listing agreement. If for some reason it can't sell, um, at, at or near the price it's being offered for, then it would come back to the city council to consider other terms.
All right, uh, Counsel Pictionary.
Thank you, just a quick question. So, uh, the, when, when our last work session, we spoke about this, and we also put some parameters in which we would like to see that property sold out. So those parameters haven't been altered at all.
No.
Do it, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, any other questions before I open the public hearing? Right, I'm not seeing any, um, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Um, I don't have any cards for this item, and Neil, do you see anybody raising their hand?
No hands online for this item, Mayor.
All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing.
I make a motion that Resolution Number One, authorizing the sale of surplus real property located at seven-twenty-five South Fifty-seventh, Fifty-seventh Street in Springfield be approved. Second.
All right, Neil, could you call the vote?
Yes, Counselor Pitts. Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
Counselor Pictionary.
Hi.
And Counselor Pitts.
All right, uh, the votes, five yes, zero nos, and one absent. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is business from the audience.
All right, give us one second, because I, we got to get organized here. Thank you. All right. So, per the instructions, we're going to start with the folks in the room first, and then we'll proceed to anybody that's online. The first speaker is going to be Jennifer Bly.
My name's Jennifer Bly, um, I'm at, I don't, do I have to give my address?
Uh, your ward or location in the city?
Um, unannexed, thirteen-sixty Tamarack Street, Springfield. I'm here on behalf of Historic Commission tonight, and basically, we just want to start a routine of saying hello and checking in from time to time, um, to give a quick update of what we're doing. And, um, so, here's the update. Um, we just recently submitted our grant application, we do this on a, um, kind of, it's an eighteen-month cycle. Um, our last grant application, we, um, focused a lot on trainings, um, and this upcoming one, we have, we're going to focus more on some public outreach events, and so, one of those, um, you may have heard some chatter about so far, but we're, um, planning to start an awards program for, um, heritage resources in Springfield. Um, and there are multiple award categories for that, um, so some of those are specifically for like restoration of physical, environmental, you know, like a house or a window project. Um, but there are other categories that are for legacy awards, lifetime achievement, as well as, um, kind of, uh, making history awards, so for like a living history. So stay tuned for more information about that, uh, the nomination will be launching hopefully in the next week or so. Um, and then the awards will be presented in May sometime during, uh, Historic Preservation Month. Um, another thing we're working on, um, or we have completed. So a few years ago, we did a first batch of these, and we've done a slightly updated batch, these are postcards about the Washburn Historic District. It shows a map on the front, uh, with sort of the walking tour sites, and then on the back, there's resources about, um, if you're a homeowner or you're looking to own home in the Washburn District, just kind of conveying the, the responsibility of stewardship that comes with that, and how you can find more information about that. So, um, I can, I'm happy to leave a pile of them, um, there are some also in the development office, I believe, and the library and the museum, and I sneak them around town, you might see them in some of the coffee shops. Um, so, I think that's it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Next speaker will be June Father Gill.
Hello, everybody, I'm June Father Gill at, at three-one-seven Thirty-S street in Springfield. And I'm, I'm here on behalf of Springfield Shelter Rights Alliance. Um, you all received a letter from us in February, so we're just here to remind you that we're asking you to do, to plan a work session for, to talk about the needs of unhoused people in Springfield. And so we're looking forward to hearing about, hearing that you will be doing that. I wanted to highlight, one of the things that we think would be really good to do, that you folks have the power to do, and that is to make some changes in the current code that will allow for more types of sites for the parking program. Right now, it's just churches and light industrial sites, and the churches have pretty much decided whether they're going to do it or not in Springfield. And so we need to open that up to allow more other places to, to make that decision, to help in that way. There's also maybe to look at some code changes that would allow for more variety of kinds of shelters, like the pallet shelters that are at the mainstream, um, housing project. Maybe those could be also other places, and that needs to be grandfathered in as well. So, those are just two things the council is actually responsible for and doesn't cost a lot of money. So we're looking forward to having, letting you have a work session where you can really look at those kinds of things in detail and make some important decisions for the unhoused people in our community. So thank you for listening, I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joseph Brunz.
My name is Joseph Brunz, uh, I live at six thousand two Main Street, and we own commercial property at twenty-seven fifty Main Street and operate, operated business out of it. And I just want it known for the record that I don't approve of the proposed changes for the safety, the Main Street Safety Plan, whether it's widening Main Street, adding roundabouts, or raised median. The last I had heard about this from the city was, um, a lady named Emma, if my memory is right, quite a few years ago, and, and another fellow from the city that came down and talked about things that might be on the docket, and there were some meetings following that, and my last recollection was from a few years ago, the mayor had said, uh, the previous mayor to come up with some other solutions, gain um, more input from the city and from business owners to come up with some viable options without taking property, without doing roundabouts, and without doing a continuous raised median. The EMX side of that thing has appeared to be kind of taken off from the reading that I've done, and it's kind of shifted change to a Main Street Safety Plan. And all those are proposed changes, and I haven't been contacted one time by the city about any, any input, any question about how it could affect my business, or my employees, or, um, just the economic side of all the construction that's been, that would take place. Um, I questioned how I could back my trailers into my house on Main Street. Currently, I sit in the middle of Main Street for a minute to seven, waiting for traffic to slow down going west so that I can pull up and then back into my driveway. Um, I don't know how I could do that with a raised median, I mean, I don't, I don't know how I would be able to do it. The, the data that's in there that is, um, being used to show the concerns of the safety of Main Street is from, like, over five years ago. It's like fifteen, two thousand fifteen and back, it doesn't account for the, all the added street lights that's been added directly in front of our house, which is great. The lowering of the speed, which that speed limit sign from forty-five to thirty-five is directly in front of my house, which is great. The added crosswalks with the, the blinking lights and all that kind of stuff. The data that's being used to push this doesn't factor in that stuff, because it's all been, since this has been proposed. And I think the transparency of either, maybe my words are wrong, like the Planning Commission or the, the drive of this, you know, it's been super poor, and I don't approve of it, and I want it made for the record, thank you.
Thank you, uh, the next person is Dan Rocher, and hopefully I got your last name correctly.
Dan Rocher, Springfield Automotive, I represent my business on twenty-three fifty-five Main Street. And I also, along with Joe, oppose the safety project as far as the, the widening of the Main Street corridor. It seemed like it could be more of a fine-tune crosswalk with the lights, uh, there are several businesses that will be impacted, including mine, with the widening, losing viable parking to allow trucks, service vehicles, eighteen-wheelers with forty-foot box drilling engines and transmissions to my shop. Uh, the raised medium would not access availability for such a task, a lot, along with the service vehicles that I, I need full width or length to come into my service base, and, and I work on at times, sub-vehicles, uh, police vehicles, um, vehicles that require the ongoing community service vehicles, I mean, there are probably people in this office vehicles. Um, and so on, so the, the amount of sp- you, you would think there would be an allowable more crosswalks, slower, even lower the speed limit down. But basically, it's, there's not a space taken, it just kind of kills so many business opportunities and employees, like as Joe says. And the, um, profitability of ma- making a, running a business, and so on. So basically, it's I haven't did a lot of planning here, but it's just the space, it's the space given. I know Roseboro next to me, there's going to be some business that won't be affected, and, and others will be hugely infected. The, the roundabouts, the widening, so if we can have a, a fine tune, I know there was Plan Three. There was the extra widen, there was the middle port, and there was the, the narrow division, or not, the, um, the white, the way it is now. And if you don't, we, we can have safety, safety corridor the way it is now, with more crosswalks, beautify it, and I mean, that's kind of what I feel about it.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Jeff Wing.
Good evening, and, uh, thank you for, uh, giving us a voice. I'm Jeff Wing, I own and operate the Finish Line Car Wash at Forty-first and Main Street. I am also echoing what both Joe and Dan said, and I'm opposed to the, uh, Main Street Safety Project. Different from those guys, I was aware of it early on and was actually, uh, selected to be part of the, uh, uh, Strategic Advisory Committee, and so I've been involved in the process, and, and I've been very disheartened by uh, the advisory committee, because I don't think it was an advisory committee at all. The business members of that committee, of that committee were, were unanimous, we were saying from the very beginning that raised medians were horrible for business, we didn't want raised medians. Um, we were told very early on that there would be a vote at the end of our three years of, of participating in this. And, um, there was never a vote, we were never given an option to have any votes. The only options that were ever presented to us involved raised medians from one and, one end of the street. The only options that were ever presented to us involved raised medians from one and, one end of the street to the other. My understanding is, is that was pretty much always on the table, that that was the only way that they were going to go. Because that's the only way they're going to get ODOT funding, federal funding. And so my participation in the committee was a waste of my time. Just like your time, my time is valuable. And so very disheartening. I think a lot of people are unaware of, of what's being planned. We're talking about spending tens of millions of dollars. And honestly, there's been no recent study, as, as Joe mentioned earlier. And we've got improvements. We've got the, the lighted crosswalks, which I think are very effective. Obviously, you're going to have some people that are, that are going to ignore them and you can't legislate against stupid. I mean, it's just the way it is. But they're, they're a very effective means of crossing the street, letting the motorists know that, that somebody's in the crosswalk. We've reduced the speed limit. There's been no study. There's been nothing to look at the impact of that. So we spent this money and we've tried to improve Main Street. And, and nobody's bothered to, to, to study to see whether it's been an effective tool. And yet we're talking about spending tens of millions of dollars. And that doesn't make any sense to me at all. So I do appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you. Danny Wright.
And I live in Walterville and I own a business on Main Street, McKenzie Feed and Pet Supply, 4441 Main Street. The business communication with Main Street has not been good. As most of the businesses that we've concurred with have not heard of it, have not received postcards or individual calls or any kind of notification. They're not part of the Chamber of Commerce or the Rotary Club or the Senior Center or the Hispanic Club that they went and spoke with. We are small business owners that work in our community and we work hard. I was part of the Strategic Advisory Committee also. Looking for a copy of the letter that was sent out to businesses that said, you know, six to eight feet of my property could be taken and my property values could be impacted. I found a document that was created on September of 2019 or two, excuse me, September of 2018. And it's called the Main Street Safety Project. And it's scripted what the Strategic Advisory Committee was going to talk about at each of their eight, up to eight meetings. And the final one was so business one was project goals, talked about coming to a conclusion. Everybody, you know, maybe not everybody would agree, but we would come to a unanimous decision over it. And then it talked, number six, we would talk about a refined solution. And meeting number eight, we would talk about a draft plan. And number eight, we would have the final plan and we would have a celebration. That was created in September of 2018 when I was invited on the Strategic Advisory Committee. And it was already scripted, what was going to happen. My time was wasted. My, my business suffered, my pets, my kids, my grandkids. I didn't need to be part of that committee because they didn't care. The Main Street Solutions now says that it is, will be safer for people walking, biking and taking transit. Previously, it said that it was infrastructure, the implementation of infrastructure will improve safety and support business and economic development. To me, that's a 180 degree turn from 2018 to now, where support of business and economic development is not part of the safety plan. So with that, I feel that more stakeholders need to be invited to the table on this. They need to be informed. We've created a group and we're trying to get the word out so that you guys, everybody that's on the, on the commission or on the council understands that even though my name's on it and it says Strategic Advisory Committee, I do not approve this plan.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Byron Davis.
Good afternoon. My name is Byron Davis. I own Autobody Specialties in Springfield, Oregon. We also own a big collision repair center called A and M Autobody in Eugene. Again, this is last minute, like last time, I literally just jumped off an airplane and ran to our little meeting. It seems like we get blindsided by this a lot. So as a business owner, the last two years has been crazy stressful on us. We've gave to employees, we have this massive tax base that my company's own, that we pour into our, we pour into our, you know, our, our neighborhoods and our city. I was conceived here. I was born here. I was raised here and now I put hundreds of thousands of dollars back into our community every year with our taxes, our land taxes. And then to get blindsided by people, you know, bureaucrats that aren't elected, that have probably no stake in it except for a star on their resume makes me sick. I've never been, again, no card, nothing given to me, just blindsided. So, you know, usually I speak much more eloquent than I am right now. I don't want to be emotional, but you guys, I mean, this, it's almost an insult that as taxpayers and all the crap we've gone through the last two years, trying to do our best for our employees, giving and giving, watch our net drop like a rock, trying to save families, put kids through schools, all the things we do as business owners. And now we're, you know, it feels like there's some kind of light at the end of the tunnel and now you're putting us through this again. It's not acceptable, not from you, 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 or anybody else on the Zoom call. You know, we, we throw our lives into these businesses. Like I said, I've been here my whole life. We own a robotic company in Arizona. We could pack up and be gone tomorrow, but we choose to stay here. And, you know, it's, it, like I said, it's really disappointing that we have to go through this garbage every couple of years. So, you know, the people that are doing this plan, they have, I don't think they have any skin in the game. Do, how many employees do they have? Do they have commercial properties they've invested their lives in? Probably not. And I would ask if the, you know, if the council, do you? It's easy to, it's easy to come up with great ideas that don't affect you. And we're all for safety. Trust me, we love safety. We love Springfield. What you guys done to downtown Springfield is amazing. We love it. But we can't have downtown Springfield go all the way to 71st. It's not feasible. We all know that. So anyways, just thank you for your time and, and I do appreciate all you guys do. I know it's not easy. But as you make decisions coming up, know that, you know, again, because the last minute, we're really trying to organize and we want to hold people accountable for your votes coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil, do we have anybody on the Zoom call?
We do.
Okay, I have about one minute left on the, on the timer. So I'm going to look to council that, that we're okay to kind of extend the time. How many folks do we, we have on the queue?
Looks like we just have one hand raised right now.
Okay, great.
Okay, our next speaker is Lizzie Utterbeck. And Lizzie, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Can.
Okay, this is Lizzie Utterback from Ward Three. I just have a quick comment tonight. First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak to you remotely, especially since numerous folks in the chambers aren't following the public health mandates. Briefly, I want to remind you that children were killed on Main Street. So that should be the center of this conversation about changes to Main Street. What can be done to protect life? I know, I feel for the business owners. I have family that own businesses and property on Franklin in Glenwood. They went through this whole thing. They didn't think they would make it. They did. It will be okay. So back to the drone program. Chief Shearer presented before you at the January 3rd council meeting earlier this year, as in January 2022, and mentioned that they had been working on a program, on the program for over the past several months. But then about a month later, a Facebook post authored by SPD and posted on the SPD Facebook page says that after over a year of training, logistics, presentations and legal considerations, the drone team has gone live. So if you may have noticed, I'm a fan of transparency. So I'm just wondering which is correct? Has the city been working on the drone program for several months, only since Chief Shearer arrived? Or for over a year and started under Chief Lewis? Which police chief is this initiative from? If this started under Chief Lewis, are you relying on the legal advice he was provided? And if the city has been working on the drone program for over a year, why has it taken the city over a year to disclose the program to the public? I heard the business owners also complaining about communication with the city. So given the department's prior lack of accountability, this, these misleading statements just continue the growing rift in the city's trust with the public. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, that appears to be our last speaker.
All right. So we're going to open this to council response. So Council Bishopery.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I am going to address an issue that, that is very big right now in our community. And it is the Main Street Project. I have been reading literally hundreds upon hundreds of comments from the public on social media. I've addressed probably a hundred myself to those folks with concerns. But you know what? It, it bugs me to see and listen to some of the words I'm hearing from these people. And what comes out is words of insulted, disrespected, ignored, and we don't matter. And I want to tell you and the folks listening and the people in the audience and on the, online that you absolutely matter. You absolutely are being heard. And I concur with many things that is being said because businesses, you know, like our, our staff needs to know, businesses don't always own the property they're sitting on. Many of them lease that property. So it doesn't mean you didn't send out a postcard, but you sent it to the property owner. That's my guess. So they're not getting that word. And, and frankly, even my understanding was that there wasn't, you know, there wasn't necessarily going to be nine roundabouts because I was told that that's, this is still a plan and can still have room for change, et cetera. But yet, when I read on the plan itself, right in the pages, it says there will be nine roundabouts. And I was shocked, absolutely stunned. I never remember, I don't remember approving nine roundabouts. And then in a conversation, and I don't recall, I think it was a work session, that I was believing, at least at the time, that there is going to be interrupted areas along the median. And then I look, now I look and it says in the plan itself, it doesn't say that anywhere. And now I don't really know. I was told by staff there would be, but yet I don't see it in the, in the plan. So as far as I'm concerned, there's absolutely no way I can support this plan, period. Until I see us go back, staff rework things, communicate with the public, communicate with the businesses and I'm, and find something that will work that doesn't negatively impact businesses. We've said it before and many times, we're a pro-business organization. This doesn't sound very pro-business to me. I think there can be a plan that, that increases the safety on Main Street and it's about pedestrian safety. This wasn't, this wasn't about increasing traffic safety. It never was. It was, it was, this plan was made for pedestrian safety because that was our issue. But now all of a sudden, we don't, it's not really, doesn't seem to be a big point here. So as far as I'm concerned, we can go back to the drawing board and, and come up the plan that the community can accept. But for right now, I hear everybody and I need to hear more and I can't get behind it the way it's written.
All right. Before we go too far kind of down, down this discussion, and maybe I'm looking for, you know, Mary Bridget or Christina, is the record still open for the Planning Commission? This is at the Planning Commission right now, correct?
Mayor, the record for the Planning Commission is actually closed. It's going to go back before the, the Planning Commission, I believe, for deliberation. I think that got bumped to April 5th instead of March 15th. And Christina might have more detailed information about the process.
Yeah, Mayor, the Planning Commission closed their record. And what all of that, all that does for the Planning Commission is it just caps a point in time that they can base their decision on so that they're not having to, they can just, you know, touch base at a point in time for them to make their decision. So they're not having to continuously re-update their information in order to proceed to their deliberations. The record for public comments remains open continuously through the city council's final decision. So any comments that were submitted to the planning staff or on the project website or to city council after the date that the Planning Commission closed their record, come to city council as part of your record for your decision. I do think that it makes it difficult for the Planning Commission to reach their deliberations if the, if the city council beacons their deliberations or begins to deliberate, I guess I should say, outside of the normal legislative land use process, because we do have to follow that process under statewide planning goals in our code.
And, and that's, and I think that's the point that, and I, that, that I was coming to right now. So I have a recommendation for the council and then a quick, you know, sort of explanation for, for, for folks in the, in the audience. My recommendation would be if the, if the Planning Commission is still deliberating on this item, that we really give them the space to do their job and not, you know, get into a long conversation about this tonight because we don't have the public comment. We don't have the plan. We're supposed to pick this up and have a, and have our own public hearing in May, which will allow us to have all the information and their recommendation. If, if we start getting too far into the weeds, right? Like, you know, it's going to sort of bias the conversation that the, that the Planning Commission is going to have. For folks in the audience, and I know that this is a big topic and I thank you guys for coming and continuing to give public comment about it. And we're a long way from the finish line on, on this item, right? And, and I recognize a lot of, a lot of you folks and your businesses out there and you're concerned about how this impacts what your livelihood is. And I know it's, I know it's a lot. I, I guess I could just, I would just leave it at that. What I'm asking the council to do is, since the Planning Commission is the recommending body, is simply give them the space to make the, make their recommendation to us. And we are the final decision-making body for this, which means we will start to, you know, based on the current schedule, open a public hearing to take in public comment over, over, starting in May. And then we can really have all the information and get into the, get into the discussion about where we need to go with this as a plan. I know that we want to end up in a place that both, you know, protects business around, along Main Street and improves safety and makes it better for everybody. And I would just ask for a little bit of patience to let the, let the other body finish. And then we will get the information and then we will start diving into it in due time. So I really appreciate you guys coming. I, I understand Danny, but we're not, we're done with public comment. All right, Leonard.
Thank you, Sean. I'd like to thank Jennifer Blee and June Father Gill and Lizzie Utterback for their comments and also the testimony of Byron, Danny, Jeff, Dan and Joe. I just wanted to echo what my colleagues have said just about the fact that I'm sure the Planning Commission and the council in turn will be giving prime consideration to the interests of the businesses along Main Street. The goal is to balance the safety of the public, both the bikehead public and the motoring public with the business interests of the owners on Main Street. So thank you for coming out and I assure you that we take your testimony very seriously.
Merrily.
Yes, I just, I wanted to say thank you to folks that showed up to make their comments about Main Street. I've talked to a few of you personally before we got to this meeting. And I just, it's important for us to hear from every one of you. No matter how many times you want to get in touch with us and let us know what you think and what you're, and what you're encountering. The only way we're going to get to a final spot and work our way through the process is to have all your input. And I don't feel like, I don't feel like we have it all right now and, or haven't had it. And I don't want you to be discouraged and feel like you're not being heard. I want you to step up, speak out, let us know what you're thinking, let us know what your concerns are. If somebody approaches or, or encounters, or gets out and talks, to get a chance to talk to you, respond. Let them know what you think. There may be people getting in contact with you, asking you questions, asking you what your concerns are. Let them know, let them know what the, what they are. But as much input as we can get, the better, the final, the final result is going to be. But as, as Counselor Stare mentioned, and Counselor Bishopery and the mayor, the only way we get to that is to go through the process and make sure that we do get all the information that we should, we should have. So thank you for stepping up and, and speaking out tonight and, and don't stop. Thank you.
Steve.
I wait till last because all the other counselors, I like what they're thinking and where they're going for you people. Your public testimony at these meetings is very important that you guys came tonight. I heard. Your public testimony at these meetings is very important that you guys came tonight. I heard you. And meeting, some of the meetings that you guys went to, you said weren't worth it. They were worth it because when you came and told me what you went through, I learned what was going on. So thank you for that. I support you and we're gonna work. We're gonna find a solution that will please everybody and that's it.
Cory.
I'm the last one. I also just wanted to, at the risk of just diddling things, I really appreciate when folks come and share where they're at and how they're experiencing things. And it gives us an opportunity to hear what's being said, hear what's being shared. And just to reiterate that this has been a long process and one of the things that I'm gathering from the testimony is that things have shifted and changed because the world has shifted and changed. And so it's an opportunity for us to 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 bring all those voices together and try to figure out where we're going. So I appreciate the patience and also, as Counselor Woodrow said, please continue to share whether you're sending emails or, you know, wherever you wherever you stand on the issue, it's helpful for us to have the full dialogue around it. So thank you to everyone who's participating.
Next item, please.
Next item is business from the city council. You have several items. Items number one, committee appointments, budget committee appointment and Nathan Bell is here for the staff report.
Nate, if you can just hang on a second, we got, we got a couple of folks exiting since their since their item was over.
And then I was coming through the portal, so I missed the introduction, but I think this is for the budget committee appointment.
That is accurate.
Before you get started, if I may, real quick, thank you very much for allowing the troops to come in, both the girl troop and the boy troop, who recognize Devon Beagle. Thank you so much.
Good night. Thank you. All right, Nate, we are ready to go. Everybody has cleared out.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm covering the site in from New Orleans. What I'm bringing forward is a budget committee appointment for Ward Six. The occupant of that position was Paul Selby and he completed his three-year term. We allow for two consecutive three-year terms. So he was, we posted this position as we do at the end of the term to all applicants in Ward Six. He applied and he was the only application received. And because he has served on the committee previously, we're bringing this straight to you as an appointment. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over.
Steve, or any other questions?
Motion. Yeah, make a motion and we appoint Paul Selby, Ward Six, to the Budget Committee with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Neil, could you call the role, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts, Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare. Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Bishopery.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes five to zero with one absent. Next item, please.
Next item is a committee appointments, a Community Development Advisory Committee appointment and AJ Nidas has the staff report.
Counsel, I'm here on behalf of Aaron Fyfield. We have prepared the ratification for Rebecca Kishiro as instructed in last week's work session.
I make a motion that we appoint Rebecca Kishiro to the Community Development Advisory Committee to finish out the term of a vacated position with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All right, Neil, could you call the role, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts, Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Bishopery.
Aye.
Motion passes five, yes, zero, no, and one absent. Next item, please.
Next item is another committee appointment, Historic Commission applicant appointment and AJ Nidas is here for the staff report.
Good evening again. I'm here on behalf of Melissa Corino and we have brought the ratification for Taran Wood to the Historic Commission based on last week's meeting.
I make a motion that we appoint Taran Wood to the Historic Commission for a four-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All right, Neil, could you call the role, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts, Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Bishopery.
Aye.
Motion passes five, yeses, zero nos, one absent. Next item, please.
Next item is your last committee appointment. It's the Museum Committee applicant appointment and AJ Nidas is here for the staff report.
We asked that you ratify David Schmuck to the Museum Committee according to last week's instruction.
I make a motion that we appoint David Schmuck to the Springfield History Museum Committee with a full term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I listened to him the other day and I'm very impressed with that man.
Second.
All right, Neil, could you call the role, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts, Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Bishopery.
Aye.
Motion passes five, yeses, zero nos, one absent. Next item, please.
Next item, Mayor, any other business from the city council?
Is there any other business? I had one quick item on, there's a piece of property that is on a sub agenda for this Wednesday, which is well, coming up for their board meeting. It is a it's a piece of property on Sixteenth and Q Street. I know Cory and I've talked about it before. And they're discussing whether or not to exercise their right of first refusal based on a request from the city. And I'm hoping since I have to go to another meeting, that one of the counselors could call into that testimony call into that board meeting and give testimony asking Sub not to buy this piece of property from us so that we can use it with and connect it in into another affordable housing project.
When is that?
Wednesday. I believe five thirty, it might be six. We can get you the information. All right.
Yes, do it, I will.
Okay. That is the only thing I had. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the city manager. The first item is Senate Bill five, five, six, one grant agreement, resolution number two, a resolution approving a grant agreement from Oregon Department of Administrative Services for one million dollars for housing programs or services. Sam Kelly Quatroki is here for the staff report.
Thank you, Neil. Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'm here for you quickly with a resolution for your adoption. This is to accept the million dollars from DAS. This is for the ambiguous housing and homeless services. Quick reminder that Aaron Fyfield will come back to you all later with the list of projects again and identifying funding sources. This is simply an administrative step to begin accepting the funds and get that process going, but we've not identified projects trying to spend this money yet.
Any other questions?
Did I make a motion? They approved resolution number two, approving a grant agreement from Oregon Department of Administrative Services for one million dollars for housing programs or services.
Second.
Neil, could you call the role, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts, Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Bishopery.
Aye.
Motion passes five, yeses, zero nos, one absent. Next item, please.
Any other business from the city manager?
No further business this evening. Thank you.
Any business from the city attorney?
No business tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned for the evening. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good meeting.